Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Atkins City Council meeting for November tenth, twenty twenty five. This meeting is being held in place of the November eleventh meeting tomorrow, which will be Veterans Day. So we're holding it one day earlier. Thank you for attending tonight. We'll begin with the roll call of the city council, and that being David Fisher.
Present.
EJ Bell.
Present.
And Trevor Durski.
Present.
And with one vacancy, and Samantha Peterson will not be attending tonight. So with that, we'd like to begin with the approval of the agenda. Motion by Durski.
I can second.
Second by Bell. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the roll call vote is David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we have the citizens' opportunity to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda. In accordance with the Iowa, the meeting's law, no action or deliberation can occur on items presented. We'd ask that you walk to the lectern, state your name for the record, and we'd have three minutes to discuss. So, any? Any takers? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to unfinished business, item number four. That being ordinance two hundred and thirty-five, that's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atkins, Iowa, two thousand and five, by amending chapter one oh six point zero eight, entitled Collection Fees, changing the amount billed for residential solid waste and recycling and landfill fees. This will be the third and final reading, and then once it's published, it would be, take effect on the date so mentioned. Do we have a motion to approve the third and final reading?
Motion to approve, we'll get to two thirty-five.
Second.
Motion by Fisher. Second by Bell. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the roll call vote is David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
And Trevor Durski.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Moving on, item number four B on the agenda, ordinance two, three, six, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances pertaining to section ninety-two point zero four, service discontinued subsections, temporary suspension of service. And this is also the third and final reading of this ordinance. We have a motion to approve the third and final reading.
Motion to approve ordinance two thirty-six.
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Bell. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the roll call vote is David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
And Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then moving on to new business for this evening. It's ordinance number two hundred and thirty-seven, ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atkins, two thousand and five, by adding a new section, ninety-two point zero nine, establishing city utility accounts deposit required. With that, Scott would you review that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You've got a copy, council, ordinance number two thirty-seven is proposed in your packet. It's an ordinance that would establish deposits for city utility accounts. Primarily just to ensure the timely payments of utilities, payments are made to the city, reducing the risk of non-payment, governing accounts that fall into arrears, provides protection for us against properties that are lien exempt, that the landlord files that pay consumption, so we would be, uh, dependent on that. The deposit would be a hundred fifty dollar utility deposit for any customer who rents, leases, or otherwise occupies property which is owned by another and for which they, the occupant, are responsible for the payment of the utility bills for that property. We would hold the deposit until the service is terminated, so there isn't a time period established for that other than when they terminate their account, close out the account with us. And at that point, then we would refund the deposit back to the renter, like the city funds that might be owed to the city, so that the account would be paid in full. The ordinance has an effective date of February first, twenty twenty-six, so we wanted to provide a little lead time to let people know after the ordinance passed, so it would go to effect right away after the third reading. Do also have in the draft of the ordinance that if you would become delinquent three times in a calendar year, that we would require an additional deposit there that would be the equivalent of two months of what the combined service utility account bill would be. So again, you have to be delinquent three times in one year, and we would impose that additional delinquency deposit. Yeah, I think this is something that's probably been overdue for a little while. We've had some bad, uh, we've been dealing with predominantly, uh, these are mostly tenant-associated accounts that we have, not very many landlords, but, uh, owners, better, but mostly tenants. Shelley and I kind of worked on this. We thought this would be an effective way of helping ensure some protection against non-payments.
Sounds good. Does that only affect the rental units, non-owner?
Correct.
And Scott, this is a normal process?
It is, yeah. I checked with Bell paying, oh, there's a hundred fifty as well, Fairfax is two hundred, so pretty similar.
Do we have to pay interest on holding that money?
No interest.
Okay, would we can, council consider a motion to approve ordinance two thirty-seven, the first reading?
Motion to approve ordinance two thirty-six.
Second.
Motion by Durski, second by Bell. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the roll call vote is David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number five B, new business, Stone Ridge Development Internal Loan for the fifth edition, annual appropriation approval, uh, fourth edition. Begin with, uh, resolution two zero two five dash eleven dash zero one, authorizing an internal loan to fund urban renewal project cost for Stone Ridge Development number five. And Scott, would you review this on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So as Mayor indicated, this would be for establishing an internal loan, which is this identical to what you all did for the fourth edition there. What we're doing here is certifying costs associated with legal, engineering, and general administrative costs. Generally, it's a little under fifty thousand dollars, so we do it, just maybe one more bill, but, but probably just a little bit under fifty thousand, we would be certifying to the county for purposes of debt collection against the development for those costs that we can curse, that we can utilize, the tax revenues, that are going to be available in that fifth edition out there. So this is not one that's going to be, you know, collected here anytime soon, because obviously there's no houses out there in the fifth phase yet, we haven't even certified a plan. But this will be one that we establish the debt, so going forward, we've already done it, it doesn't get lost, signed up, and it's on the books, and we don't have to revisit this in a year or so. So kind of just getting that internal loan instrument on the books, again, same process you did with the fourth phase. And then the other resolution in your packet materials there is, you've done this, this will be the third year in a row, fourth year in a row, that we've done this one. So this is again, and clearly, I had to do about ten of these, so here, we only have one. So we have this annual appropriation resolution, and this is for Stone Ridge Development. And what we're doing here, if you recall, we have the development agreement that the city entered into with the developer back in August of two thousand and one. In that development agreement, you said you would make rebate payments back to the developer in an aggregate amount, not to exceed six hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. So we've been doing that now for several years, so just in the way of review, fiscal year twenty-four, we rebate back to the developer a little over eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Fiscal year twenty-five, we remitted the developer a little over a hundred thirty-eight thousand. The fiscal year that we're in currently, we estimate around a hundred ninety thousand dollar rebate payment. And what we would be doing tonight is certifying fiscal year twenty-seven's payment, and we anticipate that that would be the equivalent of what we're probably going to pay this year. It might be a little more, but we're going to ask for the maximum value, but we don't anticipate that it would be less than what we're paying this year, which would be a hundred ninety thousand dollars. So I think that totals about six hundred thousand of six hundred eighty-five. So pretty much by June of twenty twenty-seven, that obligation will be mostly paid for. Might have one more payment in December of twenty twenty-seven, but, uh, so definitely when you enter that agreement on August sixth of twenty twenty-one, highly likely they could be paid off by July of twenty twenty-seven. Totally certain you're paid off by December of twenty twenty-seven. So again, this is just to certify it to the county, this is part of the TIF certification that Shelley and I have reported. At the next council meeting, we kind of have this run of things that we do prior to December first, the annual financial report, or the renewal report, road use tax report, and this TIF certification is another one. So this will be on that list that we submit to the county for their purposes, so.
Other than that, I don't think I've done anything further on that. If there was one thing, and if there is any. Well, just, I think those payments, uh, for the second resolution, two zero two five eleven oh two, that's obligating the funds, it just shows how those revenues build up over time, these valuations from those developments. And then, once this is paid, then that money will be coming to the city, so roughly two hundred thousand dollars a year, more or less. Been a good program so far, paid back quickly.
If I recall, the development, uh, development for the fifth edition was the residential?
It is, yep.
So I just want to make it known that I voted no, um, for residential TIF funds to be utilized. EJ, I think he voted no as well for residential TIF funds. I think, however, in this case, and I, I don't know where, why we got to this point, because, it, it puts undue burden on it, in my opinion. Because it, I mean, I struggle with approving this aspect, but I know that the city approved this as well. So I'm going to do the right thing and approve it here, but I completely disagree with doing residential TIF. I, I, I don't care in any way, shape, or form, in my opinion, should we do residential TIF. Not even because the developer used TIF funds to develop businesses within the community. I honestly, um, don't see the need to try to pay them back for TIF funds that we've already given them for development of businesses to say that, okay, we're going to give you more TIF funds for residential because we thank you for doing that. Well, I just, I struggle with that aspect, and I think that was the discussion that we actually had here. But I'm going to do the right thing and approve this moving forward, but I wanted to make sure that I said that.
Only thing I'd add to that is, obviously, going forward, you know, if any more stuff like this comes down the pipeline with new council members coming on, that's something that you'll want to think about, because, you know, I mean, I just don't think it's a good practice. That's just my opinion as well as Dave's, so, but that's the decisions for people down the road, but I would, I don't know. Not a fan of using TIF money for stuff like this, so anyways, that's my two cents.
Do we have a motion to approve, uh, resolution two zero two five eleven oh one? That's the resolution authorizing the internal loan for Stone Ridge twelve oh five.
Motion.
Eleven oh one.
All right. Motion by Durski, second.
I'll second it.
Second by Bell. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the roll call vote, David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
And Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, moving on to resolution two zero two five dash eleven dash oh two, that's, um, resolution obligating the funds from incremental property tax revenues, uh, to the funding of economic development payment obligation, to Stone Ridge Development. And, um, would there be a motion to approve that resolution, oh two?
Motion to approve, eleven oh two.
Second.
Motion by Durski, second by Bell. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the roll call vote, Trevor Durski.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
And David Fisher.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to item number five C, city council position vacancy. And once again, Scott, for Zina.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We called from our previous council meeting, the council had accepted the resignation of Mr. Jim Kane from the city council for the city of Atkins, that was effective October twenty-second. You approved that at the D E regular meeting on October twenty-eighth. So in that interim period, we had an election, obviously, on November fourth, those graduations to everyone who failed in that election. So as a result, we're now in a position where we're required to fill this vacancy in accordance with the Iowa constitution as well as Iowa code section sixty-nine point one two subsection two. And I've put those items there in your packet that identify what those say, we'll kind of go over those here in a little bit. So one attachment is the letter I sent, I of course worked with Dr. City's organist as well, sent to Gina Adler, who is the election associate person at the Benton County office there. So indicating again, the section of the code, sixty-nine point one two subsection two, indicating, well, when an unexpired term of office happens, and what, what our steps would be, and I kind of got that in the cover memo. Says, uh, as the unexpired term of this office for which the vacancy occurred will now expire within seventy days of the next pending election, so of course, that was the November fourth city election. The person elected to the office for the succeeding term shall be also deemed elected to fill the remainder of the unexpired portion of that term. The non-incumbent who receives the highest number of votes shall be deemed elected to fill the remainder of the unexpired portion of the term. So, um, and then in the packet also, so that was the letter I sent to, to Miss Adler, and then just copy of your packet of section sixty-nine point one two and subsection two of the code of Iowa. Then the copy of the oath of office that would be administered to the highest vote getter by city clerk Shelley. So she would do that, you're empowering her to do that. Once the votes are canvassed and certified by Benton County Board of Supervisors, we can do that. It's not done yet. But then also a copy of the oath of office procedures, when they have to be administered. Next little word she thinks put out by the Iowa League of State, so put that in the packet, just for your awareness there. Again, the resolution in your packets. In case that we, of course, are not going to take action on this tonight, but the highest vote getter, of course, was Bob Soling, is here to see me, so, uh, we do anticipate at the next council meeting that Bob would be seated for his participation at that meeting. So we would administer the oath of office to him sometime in advance of that, so I anticipate probably next week sometime, once I get a green light from Ms. Adler to do that, we'll go ahead and do that here and get Mr. Soling sworn in and to take a seat here at the table with, uh, with the other council members, so. You know, again, at the last meeting, we had passed that resolution that indicated that the council would not take any action to fill this vacancy prior to the November fourth election. So even though this particular ordinance or resolution probably is not required per se, because you really don't have any options, that's what the law prescribes under sixty-nine point one two subsection two, is that this is what happens. But this is more or less just memorializing that you concur with that, that you intend to appoint the highest vote getter, in this case, a non-incumbent, to fill that unexpired portion of the term, or when they take seat for the vote.
And what, when do you expect, do we have a date on the canvas?
No, no, yeah, no, probably towards the end of this week, is kind of what she was thinking.
Thank you, Scott. Would be a motion by council to approve resolution two zero two five eleven oh three?
I make a motion to approve resolution two hundred twenty-five eleven oh three.
Second.
Motion by Bell, second by Fisher. And with that, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, the roll call vote is David Fisher.
Aye.
Trevor Durski.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Motion carries. We can get that oath administered as soon as we get the results in, so, good. And moving on to, um, item number five D on the agenda, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, road use tax financial report, one of the required financial reports, uh, in the state of Iowa, so, uh, Scott?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Of course, this is a requirement under section three twelve point one four, code of Iowa. This is fiscal year twenty twenty-five, street financial report for the city of Atkins. Of course, you're all well aware that we receive road use tax revenues from the state, that's done on a per capita basis. I think we receive about, I think it's about a hundred and forty dollars per capita from the state. Of course, that's what they collect on the gasoline tax, when you go to the pump and you look at it, and you can see exactly how much you pay in gas tax when you register your cars and trailers and things like that, you pay a little tax on that. So those are the revenues that are collected by the state, then they administer those out on a per capita basis to the city. And so our take per year on that is just a little under three hundred thousand dollars in road use tax revenues. So Shelley's prepared this, uh, this report, so I think she's done a really, a good job in putting around on the report. This is one of those that has to be completed by December first of each year, so we'll get, uh, get this through tonight and submit it into the Department of Transportation. Pretty detailed report, just kind of talking about where those dollars went. So terms of the total revenues associated with the report, it's three hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars in total revenues associated with the report versus three hundred twenty-two thousand, uh, excuse me, that was, three hundred twenty-two thousand two hundred sixty-two in total revenue versus three hundred twenty-five five fifty-three in revenue. So, so we were, uh, expenditure, so we were a little bit upside down there by about thirty-two hundred dollars. So not bad, given that it's a more than three hundred thousand dollar budget in that department. So leaves us with an ending cash balance in the road use tax fund of about a hundred sixty-one thousand. That's a little lighter than I'd like to see it, and Shelley and I both like to see that more around the two seventy-five category. So I think just kind of looking forward, feeling, I want to think about some restraint on some things that are just to kind of keep that fund balance healthy going forward. But all in all, I think this is a good, good report. Shelley, if you want to add anything on that?
Well, there was just that, you know, um, vehicle purchase, so that, that did affect the, the ending expenses on the road use tax side. So we won't have that in the future, so should have a healthy balance.
Yeah.
And Scott, you shared with me the emergency aspects of having that fund at the two's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, just, you know, in case, we always kept that as a contingency and put it right, so that, you know, and there are so many equipments, if anything went down, you know, it was, it was expensive to fix all that. So again, generally, we, we have reserved there about half a million there, but I, I think we should probably be about that two fifty, two seventy-five.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution oh four?
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five eleven oh four.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Fisher, second by Bell. Any further discussion?
Where, uh, where are vehicle purchases, expense on here? Just curious.
There's a line item for, there is a line.
It must have been a portion, right?
I'm sorry?
It must have been a portion.
Yeah, you're right, yes. It was that, that vehicle was split between the road use tax, water, and sewer fund. So I want to roughly say about eleven, twelve thousand dollars.
That makes sense, okay. Yeah, I was just looking at the balances, or just, you know, the road use, the one-ten expenses. Um, that makes sense, it'd be under vehicles, there are twenty-three six, so there was more in the vehicles than that truck.
Yeah, there was, of course, some other maintenance.
Okay. This is a helpful report.
Yeah.
I, just for the council general knowledge of how to think about this report, how to think about the fund. Appreciate it.
Captain Shelley got it all updated with all the equipment, so I don't know if you see that, I have sort of all the vehicles up there, so totally.
We were, we've talked about that, putting it in a, kind of an asset list.
Yep, there it is.
Is it me there? Okay. With that, we have a motion, we have a second, and with that, we'll begin with the roll call vote, David Fisher.
Aye.
Trevor Durski.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number six, then, the city administrator reports, Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let her know, we've gone through that employee handbook now, we got a final version back from legal, and gone through with the employees, got their comments back, so I've distributed it to you all. We've got a few more changes, uh, to make from that, but if you could give me maybe your final comments on it, we'd like to bring that back at the next meeting. Got some good reviews from the staff, but I think we're ready to go with it, so.
That'd be great. You look good.
It's been a while.
Yes. That's a understatement.
And I would just say on that, I mean, most all that work was done, good, good work. Just kind of go through the process, filing everybody's comments and getting it all put together, and, you know, I think we're going to have a nice book to hand out to our employees and things, so I'm pretty excited about that. Uh, as I mentioned, the, we have to send out this letter, so you might be hearing about that. Every year, we have to send out this lead water service line letter, has to be distributed by November fifteenth. You know, in kind of looking at homes, we have a database of that, it's been done previously. So unless we have knowledge that those lines have been replaced and improved, these private service lines, we have to send out this letter to, you know, probably a few hundred, probably two to three hundred households in the community with kind of a prescribed letter that the U S E P A has us to distribute with this mailer. So I put a copy of just the cover memo that I drafted, that identifies how residents can determine what type of service line that they have, and if they could self-report that back to us. And it might prevent them from having to get that letter so many more years, because I think we've got to keep doing this for about seven or eight more years. You know, another one, this is all spurred, of course, by the Flint, Michigan, lead service line issues and that, so we have to continue to send these letters out, so we have a database that shows there are no copper. So we have to continue to send these letters out till we have a database that shows there are no copper, or excuse me, no, uh, lead service lines anywhere, uh, in the communities. Again, this is primarily of homes that are probably pretty empty and stuff, you know. So we're not sending out letters to, to homes that are, uh, into where developments are difficult, so. So just wanted to give you a heads up, we got that on our website and social media as well. Um, also, I think we've got some stuff on the table back there for the newly elected folks. Or if anyone else wants to attend the Iowa League of Cities Municipal Leadership Academy. I think, uh, I think all our new folks have signed up for that. I don't know if any of the folks in here currently want to attend. I think Trevor's attended that in the past, so, uh, we definitely encourage that. Uh, last but not least, we've started on the FY twenty five municipal audit. Shelley's been working really hard on that, so, uh, excited to get that, that process going. So, of course, you were, uh, not working with state auditor this year, we're working with a private firm on second problem. I think Shelley got that final bill for the state auditor that's on the list there tonight, so.
Yep.
Uh, so we have the final number on that. So I just gotta reiterate on that, I think the RFP process really worked out very, very well on that one. Uh, you know, that bill took us over twenty eight thousand on the state auditor to do that audit. Uh, that does not include the simple audit act. So if you had to do the simple audit act, that's one of the forty five hundred on top of that. So I think we're going to have to do the simple audit act this year because of the federal money involved with, uh, the housing project as well as the fire station project. So, uh, we're getting all of that for twenty five, and we haven't have it before, it'd been probably thirty two five. So definitely, again, probably about a seventy five hundred dollar savings there. So just, really, I think it's a good move on the council's part to keep doing these articles, so.
Scott, I wanna back up here just a second. The Iowa Municipal, uh, Leadership Academy trainings, those are not optional, are they?
Uh, that's the different what you're thinking of, that's the open meetings.
'Cause I was told that I, I had to attend last, when I came on, so.
Oh, the municipal leadership? No, those are optional.
Oh, I'll be darned.
Yep, yeah, so it's the open meetings one, open meetings, open trackers, they're demanded for.
Not for you. Only for newly, as of, yeah, as of July.
I mean, I, I, that's, that's the one I remember.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, with the Municipal Leadership Academy, you'll get some documents and books you can use and refer to. Um, that's one of the, the gems, so to speak, of that, that particular, uh, process. And, uh, some good sessions there, by the way, by the Iowa League of Cities. Okay, thank you, Scott.
Yeah.
Moving on to Mayor's Report, invited everyone to have a safe Halloween. Uh, had a good evening for that. Um, and then, um, attended the statewide mayor's meeting two weeks ago. I had included topics on the mandatory, uh, meetings for governmental bodies. That includes all, uh, functions there. And, uh, just a reminder that that's coming up. And then also the, uh, discuss some legislative, uh, work that's already starting to take place at the state level. So, um, I passed on some information on that. Uh, and then, moving on to item number eight, that's the consent agenda for this evening. And, uh, that's the approval of the abstract of bills and claims. And we do have an updated one this evening, uh, and then we have, um, approval of October financial reports, revenue expense, bank reconciliation, treasuries report, the approval of October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five city council meeting minutes. And then also approval of Resolution two zero two five eleven oh five. That's a resolution setting employee benefit insurance offerings. And, uh, so that gives the consent agenda for this evening.
I was just gonna mention, I mean, Mayor, on that financial side, uh, I know if you've noticed, uh, Water Park or Water Fund is getting probably healthier than it's been for, for a while, so it's good to see.
Mm-hmm.
Financially, things are looking good.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda in one?
Um, do you wanna come through the, the, the piece?
So the insurance piece that is in there, so this is a renewal on the employee health insurance. So what that does is, so the current plan that, uh, the city employees, out of the city employees around now is high deductible health plans with Walmart, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield. Uh, and the proposed plan would be to switch to, uh, the enhanced Blue three thousand. So it's a little bit more expensive plan, about five hundred dollars more a month for the employees that are on there now, total less than these. Uh, but it's, uh, it's a much better plan in terms of co-insurance, uh, office visits, emergency room visits, prescription drug participation levels. Where the one that we have now, you have to meet your deductible on all of those things before any of those benefits kick in. So, uh, Shelley and I met with our insurance benefit provider and went over that, and we've gone over with the employees. There's just so much more value there on that plan for the five hundred dollars. We just think it makes a lot of sense to do that. We would increase also the HSA contribution. These do have pretty, pretty healthy, uh, out-of-pocket maximums. So you're looking for a family at twelve thousand, twelve thousand two hundred as your out-of-pocket maximum. So, uh, we're proposing to increase the, uh, HSA contribution to buy that down to essentially seven thousand dollars.
What's the current HSA?
Uh, same thing, same number, yeah. So that's why, uh, nobody really takes a family here because of that high deductible, of that high out-of-pocket.
Okay. Does this seem on par, or where does this, where does this stand versus today, where you came from or other, other initiatives?
It's getting better.
No.
It's, it's not, it's, I mean, from what I, what I've come from, it's not there yet, but it, it's a much better benefit. You know, making it more attractive, I think, for employees to consider.
Yep. Yeah, it's definitely a step, a good step forward. Uh, same thing for me, it would not be, uh, you know, equivalent by any means to what we have, we have a lot more employees. So we've kinda suffered that we're a small group, so we're not super attractive. We've looked at, uh, United Healthcare and some others and just about the whole thing we could get, uh, at this, you know, wheelhouse. So definitely a good step forward. I think it's the best, probably the best plan that the employees will have had available to them in a long time. Uh, so I think they're pretty excited about it, excited to be able to hopefully offer it to them and continue, keep trying to improve on it.
And we also have the situation with the number of vendors that are willing to provide that, so I don't know if you wanna speak to that.
Yeah, just very few. We've had United Healthcare, uh, propose, but they were way more than this. And there was a couple others, but they weren't much interest.
I know, uh, one that was popular a few years ago has dropped out of the Iowa market, um, so. Would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Dersky. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Bill. Any further discussion then?
Yeah, I, again, I'm, I'm not gonna hold this, hold paying bills up. But again, I voted no for purchasing a generator for seventy thousand dollars. Uh, and this is, uh, to be paid this, this go-around or today's consent agenda. Again, I, I believe that that was the, one of the biggest wastes of taxpayer funds that we could have ever had here in Atkins. Um, the purchase of that generator, we've never had the need for it. Uh, therefore, I, I say the likelihood of us ever needing it in the future would also, um, be virtually nothing. So, again, I, I, I did not approve it. I don't know, EJ, I think you voted no as well. Uh, but I th- I just wanted to make it noted that, um, that seventy thousand dollars that, that is going to be paid was not approved by me, but I will approve the bills.
Any further discussion? The hearing none, roll call vote. David Fisher.
Aye.
Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, moving on then to other business. Other business by council?
Yeah, I got one item here. Um, I believe the city wastewater and waste treatment superintendent has given notice or given verbal notice that-
It's given a normal, is, is intention.
Is that right, Scott?
Yes, sir.
So Scott, I, I think that we need to, uh, start the search process. Um, and I, we should bring that up in our next meeting to discuss if we could get that on the agenda and get a, uh, search discussed, well, how we're gonna go, move forward with the search process. I just, I, I think we need to get things going as soon as possible.
Right now, he's indicating probably fourteen in March.
Well.
Hey, it'll be your-
Again, uh, again, we would wanna get somebody in that role ahead of time, I would think. That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, you know, it'd be nice to get that.
Generally, that's not an easy one to fill, so it might take a while.
Yeah, you know.
No, Plank's been looking for a long time, it's just not like to see him over there and it really still hasn't filled, so it's been after quite a while.
And then I know the other thing I know I've asked about in the past and stuff, has Todd started paying back the, the money that he owed to the city in regards to the report? I know, like, it's got kicked down the road quite a bit.
We just have more time, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that gets taken care of, so.
Scott, we, I, the way I understand it, Bell Plank just hired somebody and you got a contact there.
Oh, for wastewater?
For wastewater.
They just hired him, but, but they were really struggling, you're pretty recently getting, but.
Well, I understand that they did hire somebody, so if we could maybe reach out to them and see what they have.
Well, yeah. I would just add, there's, there's probably more, there's more than one way to do this, there's a range of options. Including hiring a full-time replacement or, um, private, some sort of contract management, uh, all the way to selling assets, which, it, there, there's a range of options. Um, I don't, I don't think any of us are of the mind to, um, part ways with owning the, the nicest, you know, you do have. Um, and that creates its own problems. But just, I think the phone that you, um, which would be maybe the search, a professional search to, uh, some sort of contract option.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, with that, um, we've completed the business on the state's agenda. So we ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Fisher. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Bill. Roll call vote, it's, uh, David Fisher.
Aye.
Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Motion carries.